Call the meeting of the Clay Township Plan and Commission order for December 7, 2022, for the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Otunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling here. Robert Jacobs.
There.
Kathy Schweickert.
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to agenda.
I find this agenda confusing, the layout of it. You know, the public hearing, and it got all the rules there, and you gotta search around to find the, oh, it's about this, and then you go down, and, oh, public comments, and it's pretty much the same thing again. Couldn't we just take all that rules and say, put them together, public and, uh, let's see, another one here. Public and comments and put it under adjourned, just one time?
I can ask, is it template? It's, um, something that...
I just find it confusing.
Cindy.
Is that the new one you have?
Yeah, this one right here, I'm looking at.
Okay, of course, you put two of them out.
See, like, there, and you go down.
Yep.
There it is again. All the same stuff.
It's because it's the same rules for public hearing and/or public comments.
Right. We could save paper and ink.
I will ask Cindy Valentine if she can change the template and/or...
I think what you put at the top is the amendment from the old one.
They did amend the agenda.
He's confused, too.
He can't hear me either. There was an amendment, they, uh, let me start over. Under, um, public hearings by mistake, it had said the draft recreational plan for public hearing.
Right.
We are not doing that, it was, it's been updated.
Okay, this is the one I pulled off the site just today.
It should have been updated, it was updated yesterday, Tuesday.
Like, right here. It's on upcoming events, December 7th, da-da-da-da-da, agenda, boom, and I get this guy, December 7th. Doesn't say what revision it is or anything.
Revision.
If there was a second one. So, this should be the current one I'm looking at. Same one Mark's got there. Agenda.
The only thing that was switched was the Clay Township rec plan because...
Oh, I'm not talking about anything switching anything, I'm just saying this thing's, the format's bad.
As far as, as far as the public comments.
Yeah, you know, we're taking up a lot of space here.
Sure.
And then you got, this is public hearing, and the rules at the top, and then it's 6A. I would think that would be, I don't know. I don't like it.
Duly noted.
Is it on the website?
Yeah.
Is it?
Okay, we will, um, she, we will see if we can change that on the first of the year. Um, the rules, I think, still need to be somewhere on...
They do, but I think they should just be listed once.
I don't have a problem with it being listed once.
Hmm?
I don't have a problem with it being listed once. So, I'll see what I can do with, um, coordinating with the Cindy, the Cindy's, how's that?
All right. If she has a problem, she can contact me.
Perfect.
Cindy squared.
Got your number. Um, anything else for approvals slash amendments to agenda for item number four?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, or the agenda, for today's meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any comments? No, roll call, please.
I think Tom already made his comments on it.
I think he did, but it's okay. As long as he's got his comments.
Deborah Addy?
I'm gonna pass, it wasn't here.
The agenda.
Oh, the agenda, yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Otunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Uh, Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number five is approval of minutes for October 26, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
I'm in a pass, thank you.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Otunin?
I'll stay as well.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Uh, Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number six is a public hearing. Uh, we have one item left on the public hearing, which is item 6A zoning ordinance for number 126 Solar Energy Systems. Um, looking at the audience at the moment, our rules for a public hearing are printed and are also available on our website, so I'm going to not necessarily read all six of those at this particular point, but I will open the public hearing at 7:06. And this is in regards to the solar energy amendments. Steve?
Good evening. You have in front of you the proposed solar energy amendments that we've discussed, uh, for the last several months. I think the last change that was reflected was, uh, to have a height limit on a flat roof. And if you go to the second page on the top, uh, that change has been made, that no part of the solar energy system shall extend above the chimney height or three feet, whichever is greater. So, we've made that change, we've made the other changes as suggested. We're here for a public hearing. Uh, pending the outcome of the public hearing, we appreciate a, uh, motion of approval or recommendation of approval or denial to the township board.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. Uh, any member of the public would like to come forward in regards to this public hearing for the solar energy? I don't see anybody. So, I would close the public hearing at 7:08, and board members, so any comments, questions?
We've gone over it several times.
And hold on one second. Go ahead.
We've gone over it several times, we should have it, ironed out pretty good by now.
Then I'm gonna motion to forward it to the township board for consideration.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion, second, everybody understand the motion? Sue, you okay over there? All right, roll call, please.
Uh, Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Oh, did we have a second?
Yes.
Right here.
Okay. Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher, uh, Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Otunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Onto the township board with that one, then. So, item number seven is new business. 7A is the 2023 Planning Commission meeting dates. Um, we have that in our packet. I did check the dates to make sure we have the right day and date going. I did check with, uh, Cindy Babish and with Steve, it's the thought if we're still gonna stick with one meeting per month, if that's workable or not workable, or if we have to go back to two, and it seems like everybody was in agreement that this works, if we need to do a special meeting.
And I think it's easier to add.
It's easier to add than subtract. Lot, lot less work for, um, Cindy and the building department to take care of. So, that's where we're at on that. So, we would need a motion, right, Steve?
Yes, yes. I got one, one question maybe, or comment at least, is the October-November meeting, they're so close together, and I think that might have happened, was it this year it happened?
It happens every year that way.
Every year, so...
It happens every year because of...
I mean, just because of holidays.
Because of the holidays.
I just didn't know if they're, I mean...
Pretty much, I think, since I've been here, it's always ended up that way because of the holidays.
Okay.
So...
Well, it used to be, we used to just do one meeting because we used to do two meetings per month. So, on those months, we'd just do one.
Well, I think, like, this year, we canceled that November one, right?
We did, because there was nothing ready to go.
Yeah, that's what I mean, just because it's so close that...
Yeah.
It is.
But I guess we crossed that bridge when we get there.
We definitely don't ever hesitate to say we can add a meeting. I mean, Steve is very well aware of that, and him and Cindy, you know, coordinating there, so if we need to do a special meeting, it just seems to be easier to do that. We talked about doing a special meeting in regards to the rec plan because of the timing of notifications, but it seemed to work out better for the board of trustees to, if they were willing to do it, take on the public hearing for it.
Okay.
So, good question, though.
Yeah. All right, then I'll motion to accept the, uh, planning commission meetings scheduled for 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Uh, Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Otunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Uh, Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item 7B will be election of officers, chair, vice chair, and secretary. So, we will start with nominations for secretary.
I thought we just did this.
Excuse me?
I thought we just did this.
Um, we did... No, it's, I said, usually in November, December, we do it, so we might have, because of...
Stuff's going by fast, then.
It is, it happens when you get older.
Well, and that's...
And then Whitey...
When Whitey was reappointed.
When Whitey wasn't reappointed.
Okay, I got you, yeah.
Best one.
All right.
Yeah, so, scandalous. Let's not go to the scandalous part. So, okay, I'm gonna go back to, um, nominations for secretary, how's that?
Robert's doing an awesome job, I'd like to nominate Robert Muesling for secretary.
I second that.
Out there.
Fourth. So, we have a nomination for Robert, and a lot of support for Robert.
I feel it through.
He does say he's stuck saving yes, come on, Robert. Is that a yes?
Yes. I said, no, I refuse. No, I just say yes.
Okay, that's a yes. So, therefore, any more nominations? Hearing none, it's closed, and we're gonna vote on secretary. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You don't need to do all of this, we won't make you work that hard, how's that? Okay, so, everybody's aye, any nays? No, congratulations, Robert.
Congratulations.
That's what you get for doing such a great job. Okay, I'm gonna open nominations for vice chair.
Chris. We love Chris. We love Chris.
Second.
Okay, we have, um, for Chris, um, any other nominations? Hearing nothing, I'll close that. Um, all in favor, wait a minute, Chris, did you say yes?
Yes.
She said yes, I heard.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, congratulations, Chris. Onto the chair, opening, um, nominations for chair.
Kathy.
Second.
All right. This is going quick, yes. Any more nominations? Hearing none, we're gonna close that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I did, sorry. Um, all opposed, all right, we have our officers. We're gonna go on to item number eight, congratulations to everybody. Um, unfinished business, we have item 8A, which is On the Rocks, and I'm gonna defer to Steve, please.
This item has been also on your agenda for a while now.
Right.
Uh, what, what basically started this, that back in, uh, June 18th, 2016, uh, you granted outdoor, uh, granted special land use approval for On the Rocks, and it stated at that time as part of your special land use approval that there'd be no outside entertainment, and the hours of the outdoor bar will be from noon until 8:00 PM. Now, the, uh, the applicant has requested that this be changed, that your special land use conditions be changed, uh, to allow entertainment from, outdoor entertainment from noon to 10:00, and extend the hours of the outdoor bar from noon to 10:00 also. Uh, it's completely within your jurisdiction under special land use approval, whether you wanna do that or not, based on, you know, your input from both the residents, the applicant, and your personal feelings in regard to the situation. Uh, I was also asked to look at, uh, how this might have been handled in the past. It appears, talking to the staff, that there were only a couple instances where this has actually gone through special land use approval. Uh, I guess the one was Cabana Blue, and this one, and they're totally different in terms of the distance from residences and that, so... So, it's basically, uh, comes down to whether the planning commission wants to amend their previously agreed upon, both the applicant agreed upon, and the commission agreed upon, the stipulations of special land use. Uh, I was also asked to look at how this may be handled in other ways by other communities. There appears to be a couple different ways. Your approach, which is through special land use approval, uh, which each case is handled individually, or passing an ordinance, which many communities have, which actually regulates outdoor entertainment and outdoor patios. Uh, both have their advantages and disadvantages. The special land use might be more appropriate to individual unique circumstances, but you can oftentimes be accused of playing favorites, too, and, uh, that causes a problem. Most communities, or not most, but a lot of communities do use the approach of we're gonna have pass a, uh, ordinance that says that you're allowed an outside patio under certain conditions, might be even distance from residential structures or different things like that, but the hours are dictated in that ordinance. I'm here probably, I'm here to, not probably, I'm here to suggest to you that, uh, I think that approach would be better, and I would request that you allow me to work with the attorney to develop a proposed ordinance on outdoor entertainment that would, uh, look at allowing some type of entertainment, also protect the residential homes surrounding, no matter where they might be. Okay?
I have a question. How does that affect current situations?
The current situation on On the Rocks would not change.
How does it affect current situations with other, well, let's just use Cabana Blue because we're talking, I mean, the different areas.
They would be grandfathered in.
Okay, so anybody that's currently there would be grandfathered in, so essentially, uh, On the Rocks would be grandfathered into what they have if the ordinance was more restricting than what...
Be no less than.
They currently have?
On the Rocks is bound right now by their special land use.
By their special land use, so if we create an ordinance...
And even if you change your, this is not gonna change that.
Okay.
Unless you agree to change your, your, uh, approval of On the Rocks comply with the new ordinance at that time.
So, Cabana Blue...
Wave your, eliminate your, basically, your, uh, restrictions.
Okay. Cabana Blue does not have outside entertainment, though, at this time.
Right, they do not.
So, they're, they're not grandfathered in to this necessarily if we form an ordinance.
If they came back, they'd be bound by the ordinance.
So, they could, they could have outside entertainment if the ordinance, if they met the stipulations of the ordinance, if we create an ordinance.
Whatever those stipulations may be.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there anybody in the township who has outside entertainment? Or do we not do that research?
I did not ask that question, but it didn't seem like it when I was looking at. Not to say that some of these restaurants may not open their doors off the road, yeah.
Decker's Landing used to have a float out there.
And they're going to be firing back up, I think, so...
Yeah.
My personal feeling, I guess, on it is, I, I think Clay Township probably is in a situation where, um, looking at an ordinance and developing ordinance makes sense. I, I think, then, then you're not gonna be accused of playing favorites, or, or even maybe you have the potential to, to choose a favorite or play a favorite. Um, I would be in favor of having the planner and the attorney look at, uh, putting an ordinance together.
The only other restaurant I could think of would be the one that's located inside Algonquin, Herbert Club.
Right.
Only because I can hear them across...
AJ's, that's Catraville.
I don't know what the name is.
But that's Algonquin, not...
Does it Algonquin?
Yeah.
Decker's, Rapp has a...
Decker's, Rapp has a...
But then Harson's Island, I mean, Schoolhouse Grill will do outside entertainment, it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, so nobody sort of notices that, but it is still...
But it's still outside entertainment.
Still out there.
Yeah. So, maybe it is, we're to the point in this community where we need to have, um, an ordinance and/or at least look, take a look at it, so we don't get accused of doing favorites.
And get some public input.
Get public input, yes, definitely, because an ordinance goes for a public hearing, so we get the public's input on that, um, get more of the public.
In regards to the On the Rocks plan that's before you know, I would suggest, I mean, my personal suggestion would be to table that until you develop an ordinance, or the petitioner, petitioner comes to the, I mean...
I don't see the petitioner here, I, I've not had any communication...
Right, he seemed to be not in too big a rush because of this offseason, but...
I, I agree with table in it for however long it takes to, uh, get the whole situation revolved.
Well, Steve, what do you think as far as the timeline is, you pulling together an ordinance for us? Are we talking, can we make this, like, more of a priority? Because we don't wanna be accused of getting to...
We definitely don't wanna get into the spring season.
No, we do not wanna do that.
No, we don't wanna go that far.
We wanna do it quickly, at least.
I don't see why I couldn't have something, a draft ready for your January meeting.
Because our January meeting would be the 25th.
Yeah, that should be fair.
Okay, does that sound reasonable to everyone?
Yeah, yeah.
I will motion to table the, uh, special land use request, is that where we are?
On the Rocks, who's AA?
Yep.
Yeah.
I will, I will motion to table that.
I'll second it. So, we have a motion, we have support, everybody understand, any more discussion?
And we're tabling it until an ordinance is developed and...
Should we add to the motion to ask the planner to develop an ordinance? Does it have to be in the motion, or does it have to be a separate motion?
It's understood.
Okay.
You certainly can, you know, I'll, I'll be back in the 25th.
Did you have a question?
Well, I'm kinda tied into something else here. Like, so let's say it's an Airbnb that's right by, by theirs, in, in a residential.
Okay.
But they're renting it out, so it's almost like a commercial. And... And they, the restaurant is a commercial, so you got maybe a commercial in a residential, all part of that Airbnb thing that's, hasn't been resolved for how long now?
Well, we can make a stipulation, if we do get a new ordinance, that Airbnbs are...
And they don't live there, you know, if they don't live there...
Well, doesn't make any difference, it's, it's still in a residential area, per residential, so R1, regardless, okay? It's a R1, it's not a commercial.
Right.
Until they rezonate, so R1s, uh... This would only be for legitimate, sole, commercial restaurants, lounges, bars.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we missing something?
Well, I'm just thinking new people nearby, that maybe they don't...
What, an Airbnb?
Yeah. And they're in a residential.
Well, we have a, we have a...
So, now it's almost like you got two businesses, but this one's in a residential, so they got kind of a, some leverage.
We have a, um, township, um, ordinance for, um, short-term rentals, and an Airbnb is a short-term rental.
Right.
So, they have to comply with that.
Correct.
That stipulates noise control.
So, it's, okay.
It's still considered residential.
So, become, this is strictly for commercial?
Yeah, regulating outdoor dining and entertainment.
It's gonna be a location.
Yeah.
Businesses.
Things around it.
Commercial businesses, and Airbnbs, yeah. Okay, any more discussion in regards to the motion?
So, are we gonna have it until the ordinance is, is developed or the petitioner returns?
I'm sorry to hear that.
As far as On the Rocks?
It's for the motion, is it, is for On the Rocks, is it gonna be until, and I'm asking Chris because he's the one...
Table the ordinance, or table the...
Until that ordinance is developed or petitioner returns?
Till the ordinance be developed would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
Just get the petitioner returns.
Well, I mean, technically, we have to address it if he comes back.
Yeah, we can table it again.
But...
Okay, so that was Chris's motion, and Tom, did you support?
Debbie did.
Debbie did, I'm sorry, Debbie.
May I clarify, are you adding if the petitioner returns as well?
No.
No.
They didn't want, so, that's why. So, it was mentioned earlier, but not for the motion, so, uh, Deborah Addy?
Hold on, one, one, one second, one second. Let's restate the motions so we're clear what we're doing.
The motions to table the special land use for the On the Rocks, 7479 Dyke Road, until ordinance is developed.
Debbie supported, any more discussion in regards to that? Sue, you're on the same page? All right, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Otunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Uh, Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, okay, thank you. We're gonna be, item 8B, which is the draft Clay Township rec plan for 2022 through 2026, Steve?
We have prepared a draft copy that's up for public review right now, the recreation plan, and the public hearing will be held by the township board, I believe, in January, and that's certain exact date, or it's upcoming, let's put it that way. You have within your packet a copy of the recreation plan. The recreation plan is, uh, the, the format of the rec plan is dictated by the state of Michigan. It tells you exactly what you need to put in there, and it's for the process of obtaining grants, uh, in which the township has received a number of grants over the years, so it's very important. I think the most important thing of the recreation plan is the, uh, page 36 of the last page, which is the five-year action plan, which talks about, uh, such things as what would be put into the different parks, and what's proposed in the different parks. Uh, for example, the township hall, uh, fitness stations along the walking pass, they're asking for a gazebo, a warming station for the winter, new playscape with a rubber surface, uh, and then there's some bridge, a Bay to Bridge Trail kiosk, and Bay to Bridge improvements on the Pearl Beach up here, uh, they're complete, uh, this is complete the plan improvements according to the Pearl Beach Development Plan, and, uh, Development Nature Park and possible kayak launch. These are the things that are proposed in there, which means that, uh, the township will be looking at grant opportunities for each of those. So basically, and I also want to say that I did receive several comments from Chris Daggy. And I appreciate those. There were some corrections that he caught. We appreciate it, and then we're also chasing some recommended changes by him. And that will be the draft of the township board working reviewing, too. And I'll make sure you get copies of all that.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to the rec plan from any of the members? Thank you for your hard work. Your office is hard work on the rec plan. Well, Teller, thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's come a long ways.
And the rec plan, there's some things, but...
I didn't see it, so...
Not directly, but, alright. Item number nine is planning consultant's report.
One doesn't use a report.
Item number 10, ZBA representative's report, which is Debbie.
Yes, we had two cases last week. One of them was on St. John Drive. The homeowner had a hot tub and wanted to surround it with some screaming, but he wanted to put it on the lot line. And of course, it's not, it doesn't pass the smell test, so, no, we voted him down. And he's, you know, it's gonna look good and all that, but it's, we can't hit that. And then there was a Marsh Road application. It's a big parcel, and they wanted to have a ZBA for where they wanted to put their garage. We sent them back to the building department. Had they talked to the building department first, they would have found them a spot to put it in. So they didn't need to come to ZBA, so we tabled that.
Thank you, I appreciate your effort. Item number 11 is board representative's report, which would be Mark.
I'd like to congratulate Bob, Christine, Kathy for reappointments. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have a lot going on in the township with a lot of different events and projects for the township itself. But you can go on the website and take a look at those. Some of it is extensive. And everybody have a good holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12 is chairperson's report. Again, I echo Mark, thank you very much for all your hard work over the year and reappointments. It's been a busy year. We'll see where we go from here. I do have a question for Steve as far as our rental ordinance that we have in place. What happened on the State House? Where are we at? Has the state taken over any of this? Do you have any update? Short terminals, yeah.
It's still staying in the house.
Is it?
It's still, yeah, the legislature hasn't done anything.
I was getting it.
So it's just stalled again?
Just sitting there.
So, because people have been asking me that question, and I, last thing I saw was it was stalled, so...
There's been no action from what I've seen.
And I thought I heard something that it's...
Anything else on the state level? Because I know they talk about different things about taking...
You know, there, it's not at the state level yet, but I'm concerned. It might be 13 states now have passed legislation to allow additional residential structures on residential property.
Oh.
Called accessory dwelling units, or mother-in-law suites, or granny flats, any of the above.
Granny flats.
13 states have adopted this under providing affordable housing for residents. So I'm not saying it's coming, but it's something that I wouldn't be surprised somebody brings up.
Okay. How about the 26 Mile Road?
26 Mile Road, lots have been happening. There's been some public input.
Okay.
But nothing other than that. I'm expecting we'll get a report, preliminary report out of them shortly. I can tell you, there are groups out there opposing any developments along 26 Mile Road right now. There was a group that opposed a development on 26 and industrial land in Ira Township. That group actually came from Chinatown Township. And...
I think Chris keeps saying so hard.
And then there was a group last night that was opposing a development near 94 and County Line, near Marine City Highway, for a trucking operation. They're just, it's an anti-growth group or anti-development group that is really pushing back against the corridor study.
Familiar with that area, right?
I was getting, well, I was kind of getting the impression we were in our classes for planning commission. I was kind of getting some impression that that might be some people out there doing that. Understood, so, alright, thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate that. I really don't have anything more as far as chairperson report, so I think, I'm glad that everybody got reappointed as far as planning commission members as a whole. So until next year, I think we'll be different people if you need to reapply, want to reapply, so... Item number 13 is planning commission member comments.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy, healthy New Year.
Definitely. Sounds good. And number 14, I already know what Tom's gonna say, so I'll work on it for your New Years, okay? Which would be public comments. So anybody in the public who wants to come forward and make any comments, please do so at the podium.
I have a question.
You just have to go to the podium, state your name. And it's comments, please.
Dan Stewart, live on Inglewood, across from On the Rocks Bar.
Okay.
Okay, I have, so this is your ordinance that the building part, building part gives us out? And it says no corporation or anything supposed to interfere with the noise of the neighbors? So you're gonna amend that, or what's gonna happen?
This is anti-noise and public nuisance ordinance. We're talking about...
Yeah, I got that from your building department.
From our building department, Clay Township, okay.
So if that ordinance is already in effect, why are you allowing the bar to make noise?
We're not allowing anybody to do any...
Well, they're home and have outside entertainment. And they have that tiki bar that creates a lot of noise.
They were supposed, if you haven't heard, we have a full-time, if you haven't heard, we have now in Clay Township a full-time code enforcement officer, so I would...
What does that mean?
I would direct that comment back to the township.
It's just an error.
Yeah, but aren't you making provisions for that bar to stay open later?
We've done nothing. It's status quo right now. We are, we are done now. No, we're...
You're looking into it.
We are, like we would do with anything in front of us.
If that bar is open later, it's going to interfere with that ordinance.
We don't know that.
You don't know that?
I don't know that at this point, so, but I'll get this back to you, though. I just don't know that at this point. Thank you for your comments, so...
That doesn't mean anything to you?
It means something to everybody, yeah, it does. There's no doubt about it. So, but thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public who wants to come forward, state their name and address?
Mark McLennan on Inglewood, too. I think your ordinance is the right way to go. It's the only way to be fair. And as, as this gentleman here said...
Planner, Steve.
I'm sorry?
Steve, he's our planner.
As Steve said, the situation with Cabana Blue and Off the Rocks are just completely different. A quarter mile versus 50 feet, that's, that's not right. I do think that in any type of ordinance for outdoor entertainment, you have to include light. Because after dark, headlights for Vince and his family are very disruptive. You have a large crowd, everyone throwing their lights, that's no good. And then also the outdoor lights for people to walk safely around, that's very disruptive. People should be able to enjoy their home in the dark, if they want the dark, and just enjoy the stars. And of course, noise. And I think it's a good step in the right direction. The only other thing I wanted to bring is Vince has a great picture, aerial view, of the way Off the Rocks was when he moved in. And with the tiki bar added, and then with each creeping step going on, and before you know it, his home is not his home anymore. It's an appendage of the bar. And I do think your ordinance is the right way to go.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience like to come forward and state your name, address, please?
Lisa Sauter first. My name's Joyce McLennan, and again, I'm on Inglewood Drive. Is, I echo what my husband there said, and I do think the ordinance is a good way to go. And if you could just please take into account of the distance and stuff like that, okay? People come to visit the bar restaurant, they live there. And they hear it every day, every night, okay? Please take that into account when you do this, okay? And yes, there is a short-term rental. We do have an Airbnb in the township. And yes, there is something in there, like you were mentioning, Tom, about noise and all that kind of stuff. So that, that stuff is covered in there. So just, just so that you, you have reference to that and stuff, that's that short-term rental. And again, just please take into account the distance and, you know, people that live there. And, you know, let's say they move, somebody else is gonna be there. That'll be somebody else's problem. It'll always be a headache. It'll always be something that comes back to visit you guys. When those people want to be open like that, that's, it's just not right, okay? And we appreciate you looking into that.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments in regards to this section? Alright, I would say, though, since you were here, you heard what we said about asking Steve to bring in ordinance together, so there will be, if we keep going that direction, there will be a point where we'll get to a public hearing and everybody obviously come to that public hearing state what your opinions are and/or you'll have a copy of the proposed ordinance at that point. We're always willing to, if we have to tweak things, we have to tweak things, so... Alright, any further...
We're just making proposals. We do, we don't vote on it. That's the board.
Exactly. We make recommendations.
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for.
See, I'm sorry?
That's the word I was looking for.
Recommendations, there you go. You gotta remember that. So we make recommendations to the board and then they can approve or disapprove. So, or send it back to us to tweak it.
So it's a possibility it might be next month at your next meeting on the 25th?
I believe at this point Steve is gonna at least bring us some language.
Right, we won't hold a public hearing yet, but we'll have a draft available.
Okay. And it'll be notice going out, which again, thinking about noticing, we had talked back in October because of the rec plan. Are we gonna look at a different way of making notices for the time?
Yeah, we've got to talk to, Cindy had already emailed me something about that. We gotta get together and figure it out.
Right, because you and I and Cindy had talked, and maybe there's a different way to...
The timing to get into the Voice newspaper is somewhat difficult at times when we, with the meeting schedule we have.
Okay.
It's asked me on the Wednesday, to be published the following Wednesday, which means if we set a public hearing tonight, it wouldn't make it get even to the newspaper until next Wednesday, and then it would be published the following Wednesday. And in 15 days' notice, we miss our next meeting. So we've got to look at some options on that.
Okay, so you and Cindy are gonna work with that, and if you need input, you know how to get ahold of me. How's that?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for the clarification on that part.
Just a clarification, we'll have the draft for you that night.
Okay.
Alright, it'll be part of your package, so it'll be online for residents to look at.
Correct.
But at that night, we'll probably have more revisions to be made.
Sure.
We'll even schedule public hearing.
Correct.
Excuse me, I really feel your, your way you handled Cabana Blue was better by requiring them to do a sound study before they had anything. Put them on, on the alert that, hey, you're in neighborhood, you have responsibility to the neighbors, even though they're a quarter mile away.
And that may be something that's incorporated into our ordinance. This is a brand-new ordinance.
It's a very good way to do it.
And we're gonna just look for public input like we do with our all ordinances and follow our procedure and hopefully streamline our ability to make things go quicker with our meetings and publications, all of which are required under the law. So Steve's a good resource to make that happen with the building department and get where we need to be quicker, okay?
Very good. Well, it's what we do with our Airbnb. I mean, it's like, I personally felt that dogs were great to have, a part of the family. But when a family brings in a dog, all of a sudden, the neighbor's dog, the resident's dog goes nuts. So we no longer allow dogs. It's cost us money. But it's the right thing to do, because the neighbors come first.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any further public comments? I don't see any more. So I'm gonna move on to item number 15, which is a German.
Support.
Support. We have a motion support for a German. All in favor? Aye, all opposed?